Uh, yeah.
So I'm gonna call to order the CPC regular meeting on August 18th, 2022. It is 6:03 PM. This is an in-person and a Zoom meeting. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed at a later date via the Tom and Dyke YouTube channel. Uh, we could all rise for the presence of plegial allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dave, can you?
You want to get rid of that?
Well, yeah, get rid of that night. Um, can you start, um, the video on that?
Yes, I can. All right, there we go. So far, just, uh, just let you know.
So let's start off with committee member introductions. Um, Kevin Stint, junior president, chairman of the CPC and also the representative from Parks and Recreation.
I'm Bill Pruitt, vice chairman of CPC.
Uh, Dan Higgins, I'm the, yeah, so from the, um, planning board.
Dave Marbo, um, uh, so I have another committee in mind, and that's the Cato Committee.
Jonathan Gale, member of March, chair of the Commission on Disability.
Jim Digidz, conservation.
And then we also have David Eckerson, who was with us on Zoom and will be here in person shortly. Who was an Atlas member and our financial, um, reporter for the committee. Uh, we can, we can start off and have it, we'll start with old business and just a recap of the CPC training while we wait for Dave to get here. Um, I know Dave Marbo, you had shared, um, the PowerPoint presentation, I think, with all of us. I think everybody got that in their email.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to review what that.
Was that supposed to come from Stuart?
No, actually, so he gave Dave a flash drive and then, yeah.
Yeah, and he left it on there. He said, go, go for it, so. He allowed us to share the, the PowerPoint presentation from the screen because we placed it on the screen and I was gonna remove it and say, hey, can I have that? And he said, sure.
So how do I share that? How do I get that?
It went to your email, basically. Did you get it?
Uh, I don't recall seeing any email from you. Would have been from you?
Yeah, I can try to send it again. Uh, let me look for it because I think I have it on my server at home.
Yeah, no, I don't get, I didn't get it.
Okay. But I'll try again.
Okay.
Uh, before the weekend, so I'll make sure you have it.
I'm forwarding it right now, checking.
Yeah, I mean, did anybody have any questions or comments about that? That training, I think it gave us a good start and went back off and get reorganized.
And then they answered several questions that at least I wasn't clear about, things that we can do, things we can't do, the limitations that we had or thought we had or don't have. And I know I'm being vague, but what I mean is it clarified a lot in terms of what we can do going forward and what, how we can allocate or the types of things we can allocate. And I think for me, that's really what was more important to understand is what we can and how we can. So I got a lot out of it.
Yeah, and actually just him mentioning the availability of information on their database. I've gone back like in the last month and just to check on a couple of different things. And this is like, literally everything you need to know is in that database and it's pretty easy to find. Um, it breaks it down, just like he was showing us. I really liked that chart with the yeses and nos for what is and what isn't eligible. But it breaks right on the, in the database. It breaks it down like to a T with all the actual language behind each category, what you can and cannot do. So I think it's a big reference point as we move forward and we start to get applications for new projects.
I did notice one thing on that asking question earlier on about, historic properties being repurposed. Was it that was, I think that was the first question you wanted to ask about it. But, um, he said, yes, but, but he talked about, you know, not. He didn't, he didn't, he wasn't very detailed about that. He just said that it was possible to do that, like repurpose it, but you can't just willy-nilly cut the building and that kind of thing. But that, so that, that could be a problem later on if the town comes before us about that. And then I went through all the, I don't want to spend a lot of time.
No, no, okay, I mean, we, I want to kill a little bit of time because the next thing we almost need Dave Eckerson here, so.
I went and looked at all the documents that Dyke has about CPC, including the, the warrant article that created it and so forth.
Yes.
And, um, and, and then there's some supplemental stuff also on the Dyke website, you know? And I, I didn't see anything specific about repurposing historic buildings. So maybe it's something on, on the state website about it.
Yep, so I'm pulling that up right now because I do remember it's that, um, somebody can help me. It's the federal, the, the federal regulations by historic property.
Federal regulations, yes.
Yeah, um, that, he always said to refer back to that. And if it was within those guidelines, then it would be CPC eligible. But as I distinctly remember saying like, oh, well, if you're gonna take this building and change it to all vinyl windows and vinyl siding, then no, they're not gonna, you know, we need to, under the federal guidelines, preserve its history.
But then it's, oh, you're saying that there's some federal regulation that where would you find, where would I find something like that?
So.
He actually gave it to us.
Okay.
I think in the PowerPoint he had, okay, the federal code is, it wasn't very long. It was literally a paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
So it was very short. Um, I just don't.
Yeah, because it was almost like a bullet point to it and then you would refer back to that.
And, and he did say similar to what the two of you were saying. You know, he said, look, if you're, if you're looking to take and put a clapboard on or vinyl siding or something like that, that probably wouldn't fly. But if you're doing it to preserve the building, but you have to retrofit it, for example, as part of the preservation to make it assessable, as, as an example, then certain components of that might be considered palatable in terms of funding. So you really have to look at when you're repurposing, what is it? What is the specific function of what you're doing for? Well, what's it for? And, excuse me, what's the, what are you actually doing within the interior or the exterior? And I think we also, for example, we also made reference to the Historical Society House at the end of Center and Williams Corner. And that was an example is if it was for a capital improvement that needed to be done because of this, if it was something just to change these stats in the building, you can't do it. But if there's a capital improvement that has to be done because of leaks and so forth and things like that, there are certain parameters that allow us to do that.
Okay, but just based on his, uh, quick answer to my question, all, all, all we know is that you can't cut the building, but there, there are other possibilities.
Yes, yeah.
So this is actually a good piece right here. And this is right under that historical project staff is they give you this whole flow chart of, um, what you can and cannot do. So it kind of gives you us the yeses and nos of, for historic projects. And actually, it does this for every category, which is nice.
So that pretty much falls into, the library falls into that then, right?
Yes, because that would be, because again, depending on what scope of the work.
If you look at those acquisition, okay, that's, that's buying it or whatever. Preservation, rehabilitation. I looked it up, see what the distinctions. Um, rehabilitation is not repurposing and restoration is not necessarily repurposing either. So aside from his answer to my question, that's the only reference I've seen so far about repurposing.
Well, I think if you're, if you repurpose in the building for another use, but you're maintaining the historic value of it, then it's a very great area. And that's, I think, all we have planned.
I agree. And I think that's where we have that chart and that's where we have, whether it's library or other things that come across probably, the impression I got from them is that we have to leave right there. It's not a hard task. Yes, you have that chart to work with, but there is some discretion on how you, the interpretation.
Yeah, rehabilitated names, that's in that chart.
Rehabilitation is.
Rehabilitate for the, or maybe it's a property functional for its intended use, including improvements that apply with any state federal.
I still haven't seen, I don't want to look, I want to see the word repurpose. And I haven't seen that. But I mean, other than his comment.
We certainly can, I mean, you could reach out to Stuart directly too and ask that question.
I mean, the name of the commission, I brought it up. And, uh, Ken, well, Slavman Kent was on, he's, he's a, uh, he's not a voting man.
He is on.
Right, so anyway, I just happened to mention him, to him, that essence of what Stuart had said about no gutting the building.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and, and then I mentioned to him that if we resisted, if, if we were to vote against a project that someone had submitted, then he'd have to find someplace else for his money to get his money. He didn't like that too much, I have a feeling.
Right, well, I mean, we all, we need to hear that the guidelines that are presented to us. And it doesn't matter what the project is. And I think the library is a prime example of one that we're really gonna have to dig in and make sure we cross our t's and dot our i's.
Yeah, I can do right here, Bo, I, I can email Stuart because I get email from him, so. Um, and maybe ask him if there are any projects that he's aware of similar to what, you know, repurposing.
Mm-hmm.
Because I just want to, I'd like to get a better feel for that, but, but anyway, that, that's kind of far off, so.
Uh, I just want to, if anyone's watching on Zoom, that Dave Eckerson is not with us in person.
Hi, Dave.
Hi.
Um, we're just, uh, on the whole business, just talking about the CPC training. I didn't know if you had anything to add to, to that before we move on.
Yeah, I do.
Um, so the next thing on the whole business is the Community Preservation Coalition dues. I know we did vote to approve, um, making that payment, but I'm not sure. Um, did you, do you know yourself or Tom Berkman actually executed that payment?
I have not seen it.
So I have a copy of the ledger and it looks like a payment was made A75.
Okay.
Out of that account, dues and subscriptions, because it's already made of A75.
Okay, I can just double check with the town accountant to see when that was made.
That is this year. Wait a minute, this, this, sorry. This could be the one from last fall, right?
Yeah, that is left.
Oh, yeah, 2022.
Right, so this one would be for that, why, 23?
23, yeah.
Have a send us a, yeah. But thank you for coming.
Well, that was another question. I didn't know if, if that had already been executed. So if not, um, I'll ask Stuart directly to, or Chase Mack to resubmit an invoice. Um, and we can get that paid.
It's also possible, just with the change in account accounts.
Right.
That things are just a little bit behind and slow down.
Well, the, I believe, uh, Bill would end up, I don't know if I said, no, you're checking our mailbox now. I didn't, well, nice to meet you. You're checking the mailbox.
Yeah.
So come to our mailbox.
Yeah. Well, I know, I think Tom Berkman had received it at one point. Um, and I didn't, I didn't know if he would be with us tonight, but I did ask him to bring the key and any paperwork that he had. But, um, and I do have, I also have a pretty, uh, most recent ledger and I don't recall seeing anything from.
It came up at the last meeting. Is there anything I forget in the minutes of whether he said he had the bill or?
He did, but I think he physically has the bill.
Is somebody who can contact to get a copy of the invoice?
Well, that's what I think, or I can just have the Mass Community Preservation Coalition just resend us an invoice and just excrete.
Right, yeah.
And instead of waiting for a pivotal party from Mr. Person. I'd actually, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to take item D in old business out of order um, so that Mr. Digidz can be present for that because I think that's a, I don't know, hold on.
I'll make a motion to take item D of old business out of order for the purpose of continuing the conversation.
Second. On paper?
I'll make item D.
All right. Excuse me. All right, so we have reviewed, discussed an act, technology for the CPC clerk, Dave Marbo, to present options.
Yeah, so what I did was basically I started off roughly with around $500 itself. And then I went to Leanne and I said, you know, she says she has a person, she deals with, they get the equipment through town hall. So I didn't get a chance to get to a printer today because I had to run some errands and she gave me this quote at the last minute. So I'm looking right now for a Dell Latitude 30, 3520, uh, eight gigs, I5, 15.6 screen. It's got Windows 10, you move it up to Windows 11. The price right now is, uh, $833.99. Now, they asked for 256 gigs, I wondered, we should try to get you more? Or you, or that's plenty, what do you think?
Uh, depending on how many files you need me to transfer over to.
With this activity, you're probably gonna need.
A lot.
But do we have the ability to have any cloud storage?
They had you gotta take up with them because I had that conversation with the clerk about putting that stuff on cloud. I never really had a good answer.
You could always get, uh.
A flash drive.
Drive where I can put things on as well.
That might make more sense that way.
And then the Microsoft license along with that, um, basically that's done through, through the cloud, but they don't want to do it. So they're gonna give you a 2019 license. It was like $70 for it. Then going on with the printer, they say no to the printer. They say since you're here most of the time, you can bring your stick in and just print off what you need. So I'm not sure if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
I think that makes the most sense too because then we're not worried about making sure you have brings a paper and bring.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing I would, I would go back to is the 2019 license for $70. Is there a two or three year license because it might be expiring this year?
I think it's gonna expire, but they don't want us, we're going through the clouds just yet, put the subscription. They're trying to avoid it to accounts. That's the answer I got from them.
So are they thinking that once we turn over to the new website, that we're gonna jump onto a new cloud subscription?
I mean, I can check, but they really, they really say they're trying to wait till the last minute to do that. They've given up like just the, anybody's just been purchasing the license. No one's really on, on the 365. Have you seen anybody? I have not.
What was the, um, what was the total again for the computer itself?
The computer itself, and I can, I'll give this to you later. I'm sorry, I don't have time. It's 833.99.
Okay.
And that's a Dell Latitude 3520. It's an I5, it's got eight gigs, which is not too bad because we're just doing, uh, we're at 15.6 screen. Um, I just got this like probably at four o'clock when I was driving. Windows 10 on it for now and then we can move it up to Windows 11 if we need to.
Well, did, did you know us about a webcam?
Uh, I think he does, but I'll double check, yeah.
Okay.
As far as the cloud, um, you know, Microsoft has a cloud component, um, which is Teams. Um, you know, there's Dropbox, there's others too. So that one way or another, I think all of us who want to be able to see what's there or historical documents and things like that, we do have to have a shared file. Which for me is the easiest thing in the end, personally, especially if there's things that are going in there that I have to listen to.
Just a drive for, for the sewer department, so there must be a drive where we could all be invited to.
Well, I know like sort of COD, Jonathan and I use Dropbox.
Yeah.
Uh, I think as long as it's secure, I, I, I'm always hesitant to, for anything to put any financial documents on there, but I think for sharing minutes, agendas and, and even allocations.
Well, I think 365 gives you a terabyte space.
Into the cloud.
Yeah, which is good.
Because I have that for my own, my own office.
Well, like I said, when I talked to, uh, uh, Mr. Pachico on it, he just wouldn't say what we can do until he's gonna look into it. I could have been wrong in the way I'm saying it, but it's like, we didn't have a cloud option or a server option back then.
Well, if we needed to in the very short term, until there's a resolution separately. Um, if you already use Dropbox, for example, I can just create a folder and call it, you know, CPC, share it with you and then give you, or you and Kevin Wright's a share with everybody else. And it's that simple.
You got plenty of space?
Oh, yeah, I have, yeah, because I have a business account.
And I'm going off, how much you pay a month for that?
I pay an annual fee of about $110.
Well, that's not bad.
Dropbox is actually relatively.
How much space you get?
Um, 50, I don't know, but it's like so many terabytes.
Wow, not bad. It's, that's, I think that's the right route to go.
So, and I've got, I've only used about 11% of it, so I think I've got a huge amount to go. And half of what I have is gonna disappear when I clean it up anyway.
Right.
So.
And then the, the only reason I'm going with them because I've got a laptop for $530 and I tried to get them, like the head of Dell who's got our account to take this and said, oh, no, you have to go over a commercial laptop. So she took that and she said, this is what you really need.
Do you know if they offer any warranty at all or extended service plan?
One year on this, uh, one year on this particular laptop.
Actually pulled it up here, so it does have, um.
Yeah.
I, I think that is kind of.
Camera microphone.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty standard now.
And it might even have different things built in. It might even have a Dropbox built into it.
And it was 16, 16 gig?
No, eight.
Eight gig, okay.
How much is the 16?
Uh, I replied back to her, I want to, I'm assuming for 16 gigs and go up to 500. Because I thought 250 gigabytes is not enough. I mean, it's adequate, but I wanted to have a pop or have more.
So I mean, it's showing here, and this is, this is just Dell's website, but it's showing 789 for an eight gig. And then that's, but I don't choose all the other options. Then it jumps up to 839, the 16 gig. So you got like a $50 difference.
Which is below.
I, I, I just don't like, we're gonna use an external drive anyway in Dropbox. They don't know if it matters.
All right, so we keep it the way it is?
Yeah, I would just keep it the way it is.
Do you, um, you want me to go with that basically?
Well, that's a, um, I'll entertain a motion. Somebody wants to?
Zach, I just want to ask first before we, is this, I'm assuming this is compatible to post any printer, one way or another?
Yes. Well, look again, she's gonna be taking herself on a, uh, on a thumb drive, taking it to the printer anyhow. Have you ever done it before? Because I, I haven't really tried using a, uh, have you used a thumb drive in the past for hers?
Not here, no.
Well, you have a printer and then, so you should be able to, and it's wireless.
Oh, okay, so you can, right, okay, so you should be good.
Yeah.
Oh, and one, uh, before, actually before we, we have a motion. Um, what was the, the subscription for, uh, Microsoft Office 70, or for the license?
It was a 29, I can check again, it was a 2019 license and it was like $70.
Does that obviously include Outlook and so forth?
It does, but, uh, I thought we're not using Outlook in a way, we use Gmail here, right?
Okay. I still don't know, I don't know what we're using.
But if it were PowerPoint, Word, Excel.
All of our town email addresses are through Outlook.
I can't answer that question. I'm not really that savvy here with the do. So I mean, we, we look at this more.
For all, for all intensive purposes, this computer is mostly being used for word processing and document jamming and so forth.
Right.
I don't think, but you can log into your, you know, your town email just like you would on.
And an I5 is a good processor where an I3 could be a dog. It gets, you know, it's not, but you get an I5 processor, which is pretty good.
You can get your emails through Google too, your town.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you can also configure it if, if, I know my laptop, I hope, at this one, and I don't know about the one you have right there, um, is configured so that my town email just comes right into it.
I get the same thing for me, so you're right about that. We don't have to use the Outlook account because I think that's more on, on, if someone's getting exchange service somewhere. So I don't think that'd be feasible for us, so.
All right, what is our budget? Just out of curiosity. We have $5,000 professional and technical.
Was that part of the office class now?
No, like it's cut, well, it's, it's not professional and technical, it's administrative and.
Dave, what's in that? The account called?
Are you gonna call for motion?
There'll be.
Yeah, we've used that.
Uh, it seems like heavy.
I'm just trying to think of what exactly, I'm just gonna find out, they're helping them.
Okay, you're probably gonna remind it through, because I don't know what the town rules on for capital equipment. Does that come to play here? Does the town budget have a, in the budget for CPC, how much, for specific land?
Yes, so that falls under our.
Well, as, as, Kevin said, professional type.
Administrative expenses is what it's, is.
And that's the 500.
Yes, so I'll entertain a motion, um, to expend, not to exceed, we'll call it $920 just for the purchase of the Dell Latitude 3520 laptop.
Okay.
Um, in the amount of $833.99, plus the Microsoft Office license and stuff for $75 to come from our administrative expense account.
What were you doing on the thumb drive? Do we have enough for that? Clue that to, to get a external drive?
Again, I think we'll have to look into it and.
Okay.
I mean.
Or at least we try something else, right? You can Dropbox or something, okay. All right, so just to let you know, I'm gonna go forward it because basically the way Karen said is they can get it shipped out, it'll be, and then they're gonna come to us and say, take it out of your account.
Mm-hmm.
I will second that.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, you seconded, so.
Yes, there was, yes, do you want to repeat the motion for?
No, I thought he was asking for a motion, did you make?
Oh.
Well, I entertain.
Okay, all right, good.
Uh, on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Digidz.
I'll see you next door, I'll be over there to run your meeting later on.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
All right, so we'll jump back, um, to item C, which is trying to report. I think we all, Dave has, you have an updated ledger, right? Or was it Dave with another?
Well, we do have one.
Well, it seems like it ran with the whole fiscal year.
Yeah, okay, the updated ledger is not very, uh, public, uh, it's a public report, so we're gonna do now is, uh, now what's the status of the town account?
It is the person has been hired and they will be incoming to, and starting some, parts of administrative mall and they are moving towards getting that person in place.
So, uh, you know, the assistant is still with us?
Yeah, so, um, Lisa, the assistant is staying with us, so for now, I think for any, you know, old business as far as accounting goes, um, she's gonna be our go-to for answers. She probably just kind of know where to find things a little bit better than, uh.
Right, yeah, so, so Tom and I did go in there, I'm not sure if we discussed this on the, the previous meeting. But Tom and I did go into the, with Janelle before she left and, uh, she, you know, acknowledged the, uh, the report we have been getting is a little lacking because the, um, previous year's warrant articles kind of disappear as you, as years progress.
Mm-hmm.
So these, um, what we want to do is work with the new income account to generate a new report that, you know, gives us a little more visibility into what was, uh, the, uh, what they call the encumbrances.
Mm-hmm.
You know, set aside for warrant articles from previous years.
So what?
Don't lose track of that.
What makes that really tricky too, and I know this from experience with like a couple of parks and rec items is, so, you know, when a warrant article is written, like say for instance, with the, with the Northlake playground, it's to be expended by the Parks and Rec Commission. So that automatically gets pulled from our ledger and goes into a special article and then the CPC doesn't really necessarily see it again. It's one from the account and then Parks and Rec handles paying those bills. But I know there's certain ones, like from sitting in on, on previous meetings when the Historic Commission did the markers, that bill was given to the CPC to be paid. So those, that's where we need to go back and decipher what's still in our ledger and what we're responsible for paying and then what has been written as a warrant article to be expended by a different.
Okay, I do have a question now, so when we bought those, uh, when we paid for those electrical grids for, uh, elderly housing up there, in, I think Dave mentioned it too, they did not stop working on it. And I was reading CPC too, that you can actually set a time limit, saying like, okay, if you guys don't use, if you don't get this project completed in, you know, in three months, then the money can be called back or whatever.
Right.
Which we really don't want to do, but take, take like River, Riverside, wherever that is, uh, elderly housing.
Yeah.
They haven't signed the work and that money.
Well, actually, you know, we're gonna talk about that a little bit in the office. So let's, as part of our application process.
But all I'm trying to say, you see, you see, you can actually throw a time limit out.
Right.
Just to let these people know if we have to.
Yeah, so we actually, we probably need to go back to F Y twenty and look at, because I think that was when that that was done was twenty nineteen. I know there was the Northlake involved, field lighting and fencing, which we're just using now. But that was one that we won't see in our ledger because it's being expended by us. And then I know the Housing Authority was the same situation, so we'll have to go back and look at the warrant articles.
Yeah.
And then go back in our ledger and look for this matching encumbrance or or not. So I think we might have to do a bit of homework myself with accounting.
Do we know, I have two years of history here, so do we know that ledger that may not be updated, as we said, as of June thirty, at the close of the town's fiscal year? Yeah, we don't have the uh, the the last report I got on the account was February of twenty two. And that doesn't mean that, so that doesn't include, that just includes the twenty one one. This is this is it. I've handed these, I'm sorry. I don't have any one, but maybe I should just do that. If you've been here before, I can see these reports. And what happens here is that this is a February of twenty two report that concludes the uh town meeting warrant votes for town meeting of twenty one. But the votes for town meeting of twenty have disappeared from this entirely, so it's a it's a pretty misleading report. So on that report, for example, for anything that was approved for twenty, yeah, it's twenty to twenty one. Like it's it's.
You wouldn't see it unless, unless, again, depending on the language of the article.
But it's, is it there here as an encumbrance or expenditure, you know, if you've lost track of what the what it was for.
Right, so I, the the ledgers that we have now are for the end of the fiscal year, so the, I mean, in essence, the balances are correct with the exception of something like Northlake Housing, where if that's a bill that we're hanging, that's gonna affect this ledger, so that's kind of the information we gotta find out. But if it was to be expended by the Housing Authority, then essentially we don't need to worry about it, because that was our, that money was taken from those accounts and moved to a s- a special account to be expended by them.
But for example, the allocation for the Northlake Playground.
That's that is not reflected in here because it's.
So we don't have yet an accurate.
And that's F Y twenty three also, so just. We don't have any reports.
Okay.
Beyond the end of the uh F Y twenty two.
Yeah, I believe this is the actual F Y twenty two final. Of course, Janelle, I still have a recount. Janelle assured me that everything, there is a trail in the system for everything.
Yes. And actually, the incoming accountant, because uh as she worked previously in the um town of Rockland, and she has pretty extensive experience working with their CPC, which is good, so she's familiar with the recording and and how this particular type of account works, so I think we'll we'll be in good shape. We just kinda need to do our homework and go back and look at that, what the warrant articles were, and if they were isolated from our account, or if they're still in there as an encumbrance.
So this is a hand-generated report, Janelle. Create by Pickett.
Yep.
It's quite uh, it's uh, pretty uh elaborate, I have to get it right, but I think. If you set it up right, so that the whole things don't go away.
Correct.
Why a lot of worries for the protocol.
Anybody else have anything to add as far as just our typical financial reports?
Thank you for having me.
Alright, so um is there any other old business? Alright, so under new business, our first item is review, discuss an act, um CPC annual state financial reports. I bounce back and forth to me, that's with Dave and with Mr. Pruitt, um just about what our requirements are of as far as reporting to the state and the coalition. The, actually, let me pull this, let me screen share, I'll get this up on my on my computer, so we can all look at it. Okay, so the first form, which is called the CP one form, um. And I did, I I emailed Chase Mack from the Coalition and he kinda confirmed all this, so the CP one form, um which I think is the one that I handed off. That's the assessors, so actually, I already handed that form off to the assessors, that just shows what the um percentages are. The tax percentage that goes into our CPC funds, so that is the um board of assessors will fill that out, return it back to us, and then we'll submit that to the state. There's not much, um, there's nothing for us to do on that one.
I'm not, I'm not even sure we are responsible for that.
We're not, it's, I think.
I don't think we have to vote on it.
No, no. I think we'll we'll take it back and just, and we'll submit them all together. Um and then the CP two form, which is the accounting for form, which is the responsibility of the town accountant. To fill, we'll probably have to work with the new town accountant to help kind of fill in some of that information.
Right, and again, it's the same uh, same information that falls over there, not still your reports, so. The balances of the individual funds and any approach, any changes that will make at the town meeting.
Yep.
So. That is not due till October thirty first.
Yeah, yeah, so the CP one is September fifteenth, um CP two is October thirty first. And then the one that is our responsibility, which is the CP three, which just shows any allocations that we made for the prior fiscal year. I did go back and look at the annual town meeting warrant from last year. And I think the only project that was approved under that fiscal year was a twenty five thousand dollar project for Historical, and it was part of, I think it was the beginning of the Historical Markers project, so we 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 have until um September fifteenth. That gets reported online. Um I got new login information from the state, so we can access that database online and do that report.
So obviously, we're talking about these going forward, but are there any of these that are in over here that were failed to be done in these years that we need to catch up on?
I don't believe so, because like in in talking, um in emailing with with Chase Mack, he didn't make any indication that we were behind or we we would do any old paperwork. So again, I think there's only, we'll go back and we'll, again, just confirm with the town accountant, and we'll see that, and we're looking at encumbrances or warrant articles that have been moved out, but I believe there's only that one project to um to put on air, and then we'll zero out the other two categories, because it's just, it was open space Historic and what was the third one, Dave? Community housing.
This one, I believe, is only applies to acreage and units of community housing.
So it doesn't anymore?
This is a G I S.
That, so that printed form is old, because that's what I asked you, I said, oh, we didn't have any acquisitions, and then Chase said, any, any type of um allocations for those categories need to be reported on CP three now. It's not just acquisitions. So that that did change, and now it's online reporting, because I did print that form originally, and that, and it has changed some, so it's all allocations, not just acquisitions. So we'll just confirm that and then submit. So yeah, but most of the, most of the work is to be done by the town accountant, and the board of assessors, we just have that one form, which should be relatively easy. Next order of business, review, discuss an act, CPC application process. That also falls, that falls under the same, that goes hand in hand with the CP two, that goes with the town.
So, uh, last question.
Yes.
Yes, so anyone who's been here for a few years, Dave. It's been, do you remember ever voting on these reports before, or reviewing these reports in the meeting?
No.
That's been here for years.
I never.
Alright.
So I feel like too, just in reviewing like the sign-offs that are required on each form, there's nothing for us to sign off on CP one or CP two, but the CP three form, I mean, it does have a pretty lengthy.
This is.
Sign-off.
Quick specifically says that the members should sign it off, but but if it was the old form of previous years, we didn't buy that we did, we bought land. We contributed to the evolution of land. Alright.
So what I'll do is, once I get into that, once we decipher if that was the only project that needs to be reported, um when I get in into the database, I'd have to assume that if it's an online database, then I'm requiring any type of signatures. I mean, I think we certainly report it at our next meeting, that this was, you know, was submitted under this, but.
Most of them.
And I can all.
Most of them are both happening.
Right.
That never happened.
That's also a question that we can ask.
So why can't you see doing this electronically too now, which is.
Yes, but I can ask that question of Chase. I haven't gone back into the database since they gave me the new login credentials, but we can ask that question prior to the, that that's due on the fifteenth, but we can figure that out if if we need to do anything as as the entire committee before that gets submitted. There you go. Alright, so review, discuss an act on the CPC application process. I don't know if you wanna start off with your com, I think you had the best opening, the best reply through our emails about, you know, taking it piece by piece and.
Um yeah, I don't have the email fragments, I can't remember half of it, but um but obviously, I mean, the the first point that jumped out at me was those that have a two-step process, which I think you have mentioned at the, you know, a few of the towns do this, which is just a real quick based on, are you eligible based upon what your request taking and the CPC guidelines before we, have you come in, made the presentation, spent a lot of money on printing, you know, maybe hiring somebody to help you and and to find out that, you know, really, this isn't gonna fly. And then the spent, next step behind that is um guidelines that we made publicly available, though. Yes, these are the things that are eligible technically. But the CPC collectively has said, you know, we're favoring X. You know, in the each of these categories, these are the things we're looking at, these are the things we're doing priority two, but making that information publicly available to any requesters, doesn't mean you get denied automatically, but just here where this is what we're favoring. I kinda read the two-step process, um which just makes it clear to people what can can't be done, and I don't know how many times I've come to CPC that we're not within it, it can be very few, but just for transparency, it makes it very clear.
I agree a hundred percent. I think what you're saying too, putting the information out there ahead of time. Because I know myself through personal experience, I have no idea what the process was. I found one application form, and I was put it up and bring it in, and we, oh, that happened.
That went so well, and I I actually think once we really establish the guidelines, the criteria, and how we, what we're looking for, and we would do it, I think it makes sense to actually either use one of our monthly meetings or a special meeting for public, for public input slash informational session.
So well, that actually is gonna be our next agenda item, which is the annual public hearing, which isn't exactly that.
And which goes hand in hand with this.
Yeah, I mean, we can almost, because I don't, we can almost have that, this a two-part discussion, because I think it does tie in hand in hand. It's because the whole purpose of that, that annual public hearing is that all the representatives of each other, you know, outside committee, planning, housing, historical parks, and and conservationists at that annual meeting, that's when we're supposed to say that, like, Parks has this in the pipeline, Historic has this in the pipeline, so we're forecasting, you know, those projects, and then it gives us a better idea of, you know, something that comes out of the blue, whether or not we can fund it.
I think we have to be careful though with the the. Annual meeting is one thing, but I think if if the, there may be a separate meeting in terms of, you know, discussing, going, reviewing the application process, public meeting to review the application process, the procedures, the expectation. And, you know, what are the deadlines for submission of A, B, and C? Unless we're gonna have all the deadline for our entire application to be the same, have this to us, then we're gonna review it, then there's gonna be a two-week review process. I think that has to be laid out to some extent, and what I'm getting at is for the purposes of transparency, I think we don't wanna be able to have a meeting and say, well, this one, unless it's something that's already allocated from prior year or from a bond or something that affects our funding that year, what's available. I don't think we wanna necessarily automatically say X, Y, and Z is allocated already, because I can, I can hear people saying, wait a minute. You said this is a meeting to find out what's blah, 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 and now you're telling us this is already allocated. So I think unless it's pre-allocated from prior year for a purpose, and it's purposed already, we need to be extra careful in that.
I'm not following you a hundred percent. So we 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 allocate a set percentage for each category every year.
Right, I I realize that.
And then we have a designated fund, but like I I think, are you trying to, so I think that's what we're trying to outline is what the application process is gonna be and what we're gonna ask of individuals applying.
That's what I'm saying.
But like, you're not gonna, you're not gonna give them any of that information outside of just our normal meetings where we have financial reports.
No, no, but I think, but I do think that we should have a public meeting where the application process deadlines and procedures are laid out for any interested committees or organizations related to anything that we can potentially support or fund are gonna come and get the presentation at the same time.
Well, I think that's, that is, again, a purpose of the annual public hearing, is to let our committees that are have seats at, within this commission, but also, yes, invite the public and present the new, you know, what's gonna be a new application process.
I think we're kinda saying the same thing.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, I'm trying, well, that's where I'm trying to reiterate it in my own head, so.
That's okay. So, is there going to work? We do have a written document specifying the application process.
Yes.
We have, so I think we ought to also plan at some point to review this, update it, get it posted on our space and town website.
Well, I think that's where we're at right now, is is how to clean this up, because we we have, so in in our existing process, you have the application for eligibility. So you brought that, again, I'll just keep using the park as an example, because it's the only one I have, because I brought my application to for eligibility, and it was like, yes, it was um it was eligible, and then you had your application for funding, there was no, but there was no application for funding, it was like a a made-up document, so it's there's no. Right, there's no formal document, so that's, I guess that's where it becomes confusing on.
Why is it confusing?
Because, so saying not, oh, being a part of this committee and you're presenting a project, and you say, say, okay, it's eligible, we're gonna take it under review, and then you say, okay, now it's time for the application for funding, and I and I say, all right, where do I fill out the application?
Yeah, there's no references to that.
But there is, yeah, there is no actual application for funding.
It's more like the details of.
Right.
Now you've given a tentative green flag and then.
Do we not know any about fourteen copies?
So that I asked, I asked Stuart that.
Oh, you did, okay.
That is, it's entirely dictated, that there's no guidelines from the state that says what our application process needs to look like. They don't dictate that at all. They're free, they're only telling us what projects are are or are not eligible for whatever reason. Our application process is decided by our committee.
By the committee itself.
So we can decide that we want it to be digital, we can decide that we want it to be paper copies, you know, that's something, again, part of this whole conversation.
They clean it up too.
How do we want this app, what do we want this application process to look like? I know, I think it's always good to have a hard paper copy to back up, you know, that information. But I, like, me personally, I don't see any reason why we can't distribute an application digitally and all be able to look at it instead of all of us have, like, so the requirement was forty eight hours before the meeting, and remember the committee had to have a paper copy of that application.
Unless someone doesn't have digital capabilities.
Right. We definitely get that hard copy, like you said.
The other side of this is that with the new town's website, that will be live in in September, as of now, September seventeen, our application, like anything else from the town, can be on the website. And anyone will be able to go to the website, not only read the parameters of it, but fill it out online, including attachments. And then once they hit submit, it would go to whoever, directly to the chairperson or to the clerk, whoever designated, and that'll be automatic. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest, and I'm proposing, um, I know you had sent out, and obviously, I can't see you, but having the company, but you had sent out a couple of different application processes that you thought looked really good.
Yeah, so I actually have one up on the TV right now.
Well, timing is everything, isn't it?
Yeah, so like the town of Lexington, like they have, it's a whole table of contents where they they have an overview, they outline this uh Coalition's definitions and eligible projects for community housing. this, uh, coalitions definitions and eligible projects for community housing, historic, open space and recreation. Um, and then they have appendixes, which I'll just kind of get through, we'll go down to the appendixes to kind of look at that. So this is lengthy.
Reprint the current stuff that's on the website to make it look more like one of the.
To have all the information available.
Everything will be up on this new website, including, you know, what our minutes, everything will be there.
Always.
If we so choose.
Yeah, because we should, I mean, we even should have links back to the coalition's website for differently, because there's all those links that fall under those categories. So it's like, if someone's researching their project, they can click on that link and go back and app, and be able to ask themselves those questions without having to come back and talk to us, you know, multiple times and get, oh, you know, you're missing this. So no, that's not eligible, but you should do this.
Let me, uh, go back there. I did look at this, but I don't remember if, and whether they had, um, timetables for submission or we had a role in submission. I know at least one of the towns maybe conquered something. You can submit anything at any time. Being fully aware that if you submit it late, it's not going to be this year town meeting, probably
Right.
a victim maybe for making submission. It's not like we're going to say, I'm done in six months, I don't even want to see it.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm kind of in favor of the latter, which is, you want to submit something, submit something. You may submit it late and you probably not going to get a good chance of anything happening for a year and a half, but
Right.
when I say, I don't even want to talk to you for six months, you know.
I agree a hundred and ten percent. It's like, yeah, lady doctor Stan, you're at the mercy of annual town meeting. Um, in some instances, again, I think, you know, that you're sitting on a tremendous amount of money, you have to time permits. And it's something that could be done at a special town meeting if it warrants it based on the project. Yeah, why would we, you know? It's not a.
Except, except devil's advocate is that if you have several submissions late, and I can see that because something may occur where suddenly money's needed for something that otherwise they may not have any source to go to. We can't fund it that year. So we say, okay, I'm sorry, this year's, we'll take your application, but and we, you know, do we ask them to resubmit for the next year or do we automatically take it as an application for next year? And then we run in the risk of saying, well, we're already working on applications from last year, we can't take anything else this year.
Alright, but that, that would have to be at the discretion of of the committee, depending on what we have on our plate.
It would, but I think, I guess what I'm saying is, I think we, regardless of anything, I still think we need to have a, you know, a timeline for submission. But if things are submitted late and there's availability, it will be considered.
I don't think you necessarily have to have it like the, a dead set date, but you just have to have the disclaimer there for the people submitting that if you want this to appear on annual town meeting, we need to see it, know, like, at least make the information available. So that, you know, say it's, you know, fe, our February meeting would be the latest, we would accept an application for eligibility to be presented at June's annual town meeting, you know, based on warrant article times and things of that nature. So I, I think, I would hate to put dentists, because I agree with you that, you know, we should be accepting applications on a, on a regular. That way you, I, I think it will alleviate to an inrush of applications of everybody kind of getting in at the last minute. You know, if you want to submit in December or for June, great, you know, or October for June, great. You know, let's get ahead of it and have it, you know, all done, prepared, and then we're not killing ourselves to make it on, you know, write a warrant article at the last minute. So, but just make it known to the people that are submitting that this is going to be.
So this would be like, there are, there is, there are some windows here, and I don't know what exactly they are, because I'm not that to move. It's big, uh, the windows are defined by the town meetings. And there's also a special meeting, was it February or something?
November. November.
So, and that would be eligible for CPC stuff, right?
It could be if we so choose. Um, let's just actually, just, again, Dan just sent this the other day. The, um, special town meeting timeline. So just for instance, look at this. So the warrant for the special town meeting closes on September fourteenth. So we, say if we do go with a two-step process and we would, then in this case, we would say applications, you know, no later than July, so we'd have the two months to prepare and then submit it in September before the closing warrants. So yeah, that will be dictated by when the warrants close, but.
It's good. I think that, that was the intention here was to have a comfortable process, not like, um, the playground process last year. So I think it went like this. This says, uh, eligibility applications by November first. So we will look at eligibility applications in November, vote on them in December. Look at funding applications in January, maybe February, vote on them in March. Then vote on the warrant article, prepare warrant articles, vote on them in April to meet the, uh,
Well, this, this one was for, for a special, which is November first.
I think April, I think our April meeting was tight to get on the, uh, the company. So, um, and similarly with this, we could, you know, we could have a whole nother flow that started in July.
Well, I feel like that is, to me, is such a prolonged process. It's like, you have eligibility and now, alright, we took it under consideration. So consideration doesn't mean I took it underneath my desk until next month. I mean, I think it's our job as a committee.
We're responding to them.
Yeah.
Wait, we discuss it in a meeting.
Well, that's what I mean, but to wait, but I think in the time that a month has passed, where you've taken it under consideration, now that's the time to start, everybody collectively thinking, alright, is this something that we're really going to be able to fund? So when you get to the next meeting, we don't have to have this three or four months of meetings. It might be, you know, two months, you know, eligibility, yes, we approved the eligibility next month, yes, we approve the, um, funding. And then maybe the following month, that's when you write the warrant article.
Yeah.
Or you can also stack them. So like in that month before warrants are due, that's what all we do in that meeting is discuss warrant articles.
My only, my, my only question and concern there, I guess, in general is we know from the June town meeting, for the most part, by from the previous year, I'll put it that way. We know in general what we have available for funds. If we were to put potentially something on in November or set items in November, do we know between June and November what we have going for the future year already, what are available funds are? Because we run the risk of expending too much in November and not having what we want available for June.
No, because June is, June is approving the next fiscal years.
I agree.
I mean, the, the reserve, the unrestricted reserve account is kind of an, an ever-growing or ever-changing account, so you need to keep a close eye on that.
That's what I'm saying. When do we know, when do we know?
You should always know, because every month, every meeting, we should have a financial report, we should be staying on top of exactly how much we have now.
No, we're not going to be that close to zero on you.
I know, I just, I'm just going in there for argument and conversation.
Well, that's that, well, that part of the process is, is it eligible or do we have the money to fund this? Like if somebody came up to us and said, oh, we want to buy this seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollar piece of land and we're going to exhaust the entire CPC fund, that's a big conversation that. Because then it, then it puts you in that situation where now we can only have twelve thousand five hundred dollars to give each other a project.
Or, and I don't know if this is in the application process right now, or it should be included in the application process, is this something where we may potentially need to bond it? And then we'll be discussing that with Stuart.
Well, and that's project dependent. So again, if it becomes something like that and you have the capability to bond it, then that's another conversation.
So that, that bonding business, that would be like, uh,
Well, the example might be what we were, we were talking about at the very beginning, that historical building that was just bought.
Yeah, but you said, like, the town if it needs money, takes out a municipal bond.
Same, same premise as how we make statements on the police station.
We'll do the same number. This, this option, uh, I didn't quite get it all from, you know. We do have the option to do that based on, we don't have to have all that money available in the current year, but we have to be able to allocate that money in the years of the bond. Yeah, but is this a bond, is this a bond on the bond market that you got at this town? It's a municipal bond process. Well, we, we can issue a bond. I don't think it's formally. It has to be done by. It's the treasurer, treasurer or something like that. Correct. I'm not sure. I don't really like the idea of, personally, I don't like that idea of bonding is, you know, but you're going into debt in order to satisfy some issue with some sort of, right? I mean, say we, we, somebody did come in with a seven hundred thousand dollar request and we only had, say, three hundred K in, in, in balance. So why? If you bonded over X number of years. Right, but I mean. And allocation.
I'm going to bring it up for you right now. There's, um, a whole, again, in the data bank, a history of bonded projects. Maybe we'd have to be paying payments. So that's exactly what it is.
You have to make your payments on a annual basis, and that has to come from each year's available dollars.
So say for instance, the town of Acton, right, this Wright Hill land purchase. So they bonded nine hundred thousand for fifteen years to get to this other, this amount, which is two million.
So does this say what the payment is? Is it like, uh?
Again, this, this plum field was three hundred, uh, or what font? Five hundred thousand over a ten-year term. So I'm assuming that is, is isolated fifty thousand
Yeah.
a year.
A little more because of the interest.
Right.
So maybe like fifty-five or sixty thousand.
Which is. So that was, they, it was a five hundred thousand dollar bond, but it's spread over ten years, which shows instead of exhausting your entire account, you do fifty.
No, I know, but what, so ten goes into, that's fifty thousand, uh. Well, that would be fifty thousand a year for ten years, but you have some interest on it. So maybe a fifty-seven or sixty per year to get to the final figure, whatever it is. So I think in this, that comes out of the CPC. Yes, yes. Yeah, we would have to vote on that every time there was a payment due. No, you would budget based on your one, your one vote for ten years. So then every year, that money, think of it as being put, set aside, it's put on the, on the, on the small butter plate. So, so would that be a direction to the town accountant to do that? Who would be sending the money to Wall Street? That's the question, you know what I'm saying?
It would be an allocation of our funds, however we annually allocate our funds.
What would be our participation in this process?
It would be, it would just strictly be a warrant article that we, so say, well, we'll use like, say Sweet Snoll was available, we wanted to buy Sweet Snoll, and they wanted a million dollars for it, but we didn't want to cough up a million dollars. So we did, you know, we made the bond for X amount of dollars for so many years. So we would write that warrant article and then allocate that percentage of, you know, of that, you know, however many split of the payments. But it still has to go through town meeting. So, and that's, we could say yes to it and it could still get shown.
It only goes to town meeting one time, it doesn't go every year.
Correct, it's only that one time the bond is good.
Yeah, that's fine, but, but I'm trying to get at the mechanism of payment. Just like you get, uh, the mortgage payment of your house.
Again, it's going to be expended by who?
That's a question.
So it's like, yeah, either we're getting in, you know, some sort of bill invoice, whatever it may be.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, the logic, the, the logic side of it on the simplest term is probably whenever our allocation is from the town for the year, let's just say, you know, it's six hundred thousand dollars. The six hundred thousand dollars is going to go from this side of the ledger to here. And then let's just suppose that figure was to be, from that bond was hundred ten thousand a year, it's going to get from here, which has the six hundred thousand to over here to pay the bank the hundred ten thousand. And then this is, bill is going to reflect as four hundred ninety thousand balance.
We, I mean, we've never done, why guess?
So we've never done that, I think.
Half a side.
No, but I can foresee that coming down the pike.
So Kevin, so the process for someone wants to do a project, we should try to keep it around three months from start to finish, basically?
I, I think that's a good amount. I think that three meetings is more than enough to approve or deny.
And we should, and I like the idea not going over that, like we did in past projects, because as we know.
Well, I, I think what happened the other day was that, you know, people, okay, we say, okay, this is eligible. Go for it. Then they went out, they had to get quotes and that, so they had to really, you know, they had to do.
So they can sort of drag the process a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that.
That was why we were encouraging people to get started really. Some things could, obviously.
Well, I think too.
Okay.
Again, uh, like I think if you're going to present a project, because you need, and that needs to be projected in our website and our application processes, don't, you can't come to us with an idea. You need to come to us with the entire project. You know, because that's kind of, again, again, with the playground, it was broken down.
Right.
Here's everything you need. That way it expedites the product. I think most people did it. The town clerk did the same thing, he had all his information.
And when they were proposing to do the library, it wasn't like that. Uh, Jim Aguirre came and said, uh, I felt that he in effect said, how much can I get? And then he proposed a number of things that could be done with the libraries. And sort of a free one discussion of whether those things would be eligible. So, and there's different kinds of projects. Some, I think we've got to leave room for creativity here. I'd like the CPC to have, uh. I, I think, I think there's a problem in my mind. My experience with money, government and so forth. If you, um, it's, it's, it, it, it sounds a lot like the CPC is sliding into this cash cow category for the town. In other words, they don't have any, uh, public support, say, for a bond issue. Uh, especially if it means raising taxes, mostly. Uh, and what now they, they say, oh, we'll get the CPC to fund this thing because it's politically tough for us, but it's easy for them. It still has to be passed in, in, at the meeting, town meeting, but it's a lot easier when money is, you know, already there or you're not raising and appropriating. I don't know if you want to, I don't think, I don't know if the CPC wants to go into a debt. CPC would be on the, on the hook for this. Because the money has to, for paying that bond, I don't know how exactly it's done or, or who, who does the bond. We don't have to be third. I think that's an issue that needs to be part of the conversation more in more detail of whether or not, because if we're going to offer this in the application potential process or not, that's really important, either we.
Well, no, in the application process, I think you should, you need to just throw out, and that's again, where you need to be very strict on staying within the coalition's guidelines for projects. List those guidelines and if those projects don't fall within that, like, you can't, you know, you can't turn the blind eye if the project doesn't fit within the guideline.
No, but a project may call for potential needing to be bonded, so.
But like, let's cross that bridge. I don't want to have a conversation about a bond when we don't even have a project that needs to be bonded. I'd rather cross that bridge when we get to it instead of.
I guess, all I'm saying is that I think it needs to be part of the aspect of an application, even if it's one or two words or lines. I think.
No, because that's, you're not talking about when, those people, when you're coming to us with an application, they should be concerned about its eligibility. And then the funding falls on us, so they should not be concerning themselves with how we are going to fund it. That it needs to be a determination.
That's a decision of the CPC. I, I don't disagree, but my concern is only that if they think, if they don't know it could be a question of eligibility for that aspect, it may not come before us. Now, that's a deterrent on a level. But I think we need to have something that at least somewhere. Well, it's a, it's a decision by, you know, when somebody comes for application eligibility and we look at it, um, supposing the amount of money that they penciled in there on that application, uh, one of the things we should do is to look at our current balance. And see if, if this is a doable thing, then, then the decision could come to, you know, a bond issue maybe, but, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a great point, that if it's a project that we all think is worthwhile, but it's, you know, not financially feasible in one fiscal year, then we can, yes, certainly have that conversation. Um, and instead of just straight shooting it down, that's a great.
I just, and I, and I don't disagree with that. I just.
But that's, I just don't think that that's a, that's an applicant's issue to worry about, want to have information.
I, but I don't want later, I don't want somebody to say, well, you know, you did it two years ago for this project. And what about us? That's why I just think, I think for transparency, it's at least important to have something out there, even if it says, you know, is, you're, there's, that, that is not a consideration for your project. Blah, 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 but, you know, there's always that but.
I, I think you end up chasing your tail if you give too much information about, especially about funding.
Although, I mean, each one of these Lexington include does say, we give, above and beyond being eligible, we give preference to these things. And we may say, we give preference to things that can be funded in one fiscal year, because we don't really. And we may say, we give preference to things that can be funded in one fiscal year, because we don't really, we don't, bonding's an extreme case that we can do. But our preference is to do things, and we can just stay out of fun and say, you know, are, these are the things we give preference to, but then one of them could be, we agreed. To say things that can be funded in one fiscal year.
And that's almost a fair way of, I think, of acknowledging what we're all trying to say.
Right, yeah, all right, so just tying this all together with what you're saying, what you're saying is. They don't make that information part of the application process, but like you're saying, like in Lexington where it's in your overview or whatever.
It's national, yeah.
They call that, yeah.
Yeah, they, they list like fifteen things, it is looking to the preference though.
So Mr. Chairman, for better or worse, um. Because I know that we need to obviously put some more time into this for conversation purposes and to come, come up with it. And I don't think we're gonna come up with an answer tonight. I am going to make a motion to suggest that. You appoint a subcommittee of three. To work over the next month to come up with the application process and guidelines to present to us at our September meeting. Or if you think that's too soon, I'll say October, but I think September, right, because there's other, there's a lot of others that are put out there that we can both from, put it together. So I don't think it's too difficult, but I think it would make sense to have a committee of three subcommittee put it together and come back with a recommendation for the next meeting. If anybody wants to second it, I don't know. I'm just putting that.
I can't, I can't wait to hear what he says, so.
No, I mean, I'll, I mean, if somebody wants to second, we can second it and then have a discussion.
Okay, I'll second it for the court of justice.
I have a motion and a second.
What was, I'm sorry, it was a whole.
So Jonathan made a motion to appoint a subcommittee of three.
And the chair appointed a subcommittee of three.
That I appointed a subcommittee of three to work on a new application.
Okay, sounds good.
I hate subcommittees, hate it. I hate pinning that job on like three specific people.
You couldn't appoint two, three before we're not here to.
This is true, yeah, that'll work out so well. I, I would rather, I, I, I would rather really see like a collaborative effort of everybody for a committee of. Not, I think it's nine.
Yep.
Ish, some, something like that. Like, I'm perfectly okay, obviously, we're not gonna have any decision-making done through email threads or anything like that. But I think it's perfectly okay to, you know, say, hey, I really like this, from like, and then we can have this conversation.
So collaborate with the.
Just collaborate and have everybody say, you know, I think this is a good piece, you know, and we might be able to assemble collectively, like, let's say, three drafts.
And you know, the irony, I have to stop you there, cause I don't disagree in the sense that the irony is if we had something like the Dropbox, that's exactly what we would be doing.
Yes, so that is, that is a good point, yeah, we could have a, you know, set up Dropbox.
Can we get the Dropbox done early?
I mean, that's.
I can set that up right away.
Okay.
Yeah, and if Jonathan sends it to me, I can just grant the access to everybody. And then, yeah, it is, it's just kinda, it's a lot like Google Docs where it's a live document, so you can go in, edit, or write, or even put a sign note. And, you know, say, ah, you know what, I, I don't think that piece fits, let's use this piece.
And you can have as many folders and folders as you want in that Dropbox. So we could have that, we can have our budget, we can have other items, we can have minutes, you can put as much as you want in that one folder.
My, my attitude towards the whole, the application or the plans specifically, is there's, there's a reason why the coalition has specific towns listed. On their website, it's because those applications work well for them. Uh, I don't think they'd highlight something that, you know, wasn't efficient. So I think even that, a lot of them, when you click on them, they come up as a Word doc, so it's like, even if we pick our favorites and throw them in the Dropbox, and it's a live Word doc, we can edit it. And change the language as we see fit. And then by, you know, this, our September meeting, be ready to, you know, look at three draft applications. And do, I think it's, it's just easier to do it that way, instead of pinning it on three people.
So do we take somebody else's, uh. Eligibility application and we just tweak it to our own, right? I mean, that's why you do whatever.
Theoretically, you could put any, all these eligibility applications into that Dropbox folder as examples.
Right.
And then if somebody wants to have a paste.
Right, and then just pull out separate pieces.
I like that, Jonathan.
Yeah, and I can actually, I very easily could do with everybody, um, with Kevin, on his laptop next time, we could do whoever needs it. Literally fifteen to twenty minutes of how to use Dropbox.
That's a good idea.
It's that simple, so that everyone's on the same page. If I is a person who can't see, can use it, anybody can use it. And I don't, I don't mean that's our, yeah, but it really is friendly to use.
Need for a vote for it?
Or, yeah, so just on, can I, I'm gonna clarify.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to withdraw the motion.
All right, that makes it easier.
Okay, good.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Oh, when's the next meeting, third or a sixth?
Yeah, we'll keep it, oh, Thursday.
All right, sorry, I gotta go over there and, uh, hold on.
What's the meeting over there?
Uh, Con Con in, uh, Dago, pretty long over there, probably to ten o'clock for that, so give her a break.
What, paid Dropbox, Jonathan?
I'm sorry.
Is it paid Dropbox?
It's a paid Dropbox, but I already do it anyway.
Well, what do they do for our expense, yeah, right? We have our own Dropbox, do we pay for it?
Or. Um, theoretically, you could, but this one's already paid for, it does, I mean, the equivalent dollars is only a few months, so don't worry about it.
Okay.
And ultimately, and ultimately, if I'm no longer on here or something, then I will just hand it off to whoever, and that.
Right, we could always, yeah, try to transfer those files over and create another.
Okay.
There's so much, you get X amount of free storage, I'm sure we would, we would eat it up. But there is X.
I gotta look at it differently too, cause we looked at Dropbox one time, we were going with two expenses, so we dropped it. I was thinking a lot.
No, and as I said, I have a business version, so I have plenty of room on it, so.
Okay, sounds good. I might be asking you a couple of questions about it, okay, but.
Okay.
All right, everyone, take care, thank you.
No worries.
Y'all submit their laptop, quick, we can sell.
Very good.
Take care.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm almost thinking too, we can almost do the same thing with the annual public hearing, but again, on the, on the coalition's website. It does give some examples of like how they reach out to the newspaper to do that publication. Um, so maybe we do the same thing and at the next meeting, we come up with, this is what we want our annual, um, public hearing to look like. You know, whether it be, you know, committee reports, so each one of us that represents someone else reports on any projects that we know of. Um, so that way. So almost it will iron out the details and, and make a decision in our next meeting, but then the following meeting for those committees and commissions, we probably wanna have the conversation. And set the date for the, the angle. Um, you know, we'll set it, set a date for that, work out whatever details we need to, as far as sharing it through the newspaper, then that is still a requirement. And also, you know, if you get the website or social media, so on and so forth.
Also, like, annual public hearing is the minimum requirement.
Right.
It's not the only option. I mean, if we wanna increase town volume for when these things come up at town meeting. There may be other ways we can approach it to engage the town more. Annual town meeting is just a bare minimum, what we have to do.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the annual public meeting that we have to have, I'm assuming at least through March, that can be hybrid version?
Yes, until, yeah, absolutely.
March or January, right?
And again, it's like you'd have to set that meeting date, create the Zoom link and have it published in the newspaper as well.
Yes.
Does anybody else have anything to add on that or any other new business? Um, did everybody receive the copy of the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Maybe we did a good job of it, it was good.
Right.
So I, I want to take a motion on the meeting minutes.
Uh, move that we accept the meeting is for July twenty-eighth.
So a second.
Second.
You go, second. On paper?
I'm.
Aye. Yes. Uh, future meeting date, we'll just look at the actual date. So it's third?
Third, Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, so seven, so that would be September fifteenth.
Six P M.
Yeah, I think six P M seem to work.
Well, probably.
I, I, I guess the only other thing to consider, and I don't know, does any other interference with other, um. Committees' meeting times, you look at it, but do we. Should we consider moving it to like five thirty so that like Mister Didges can stay?
So is his conservation also if we, third, Thursday?
At seven, yeah.
And he seems to need to get over there early to get his stuff put together. Yeah, I'm trying to put it earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
How's your schedule? What time is your date?
I have a question.
Five thirty works.
Yeah. So when's the next meeting? What's the date?
Uh, September fifteenth.
Okay, so it's pretty much always gonna be the.
They're always.
I don't know, you know what, why don't we hold up and check the date, because if he has to go to work, he's going from the city.
Okay.
I'm just thinking out loud, I believe he thinks we can, because.
Yeah, well, and I, but the time of the meeting, I don't, we don't need to vote on anyway, we can, we don't just collectively send out an email and just make sure that five thirty works for everyone. And then, um. And then just take it from there, we'll just set the meeting.
The fifteenth, yeah.
The fifteenth, yes, and then time to be determined. Yeah, I think it would be nice to, so Mister Didges always has to leave early, let's try to. Make it a little bit earlier so everybody can participate through the.
Can we change it to six A M since I'm not early?
No. I, I'm sorry, I do have this one other job that I do. Public input, let me just check.
So with that, now ends the team of motion to adjourn. Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Jonathan, I will take a motion that we adjourn at.
Seven twenty-four.
Seven twenty-four P M.
Right, a second.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.